Thank you very much. I would like to call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So first item on the agenda today is our public hearing. I would like to officially call this public hearing to order and I am going to review the public hearing procedures. So the Town of La Plata virtual public hearings will be conducted in the following manner. At my discretion, speakers comments may be limited to three minutes. If you wish to speak for the record, you must announce your name when joining the virtual meeting and state that you intend to speak during the hearing. Ms. Phipps, did anybody indicate that?
No, ma'am.
Okay, please keep your phone and audio muted until you are called to speak. Your name will be added to the speaker's list. Written documents for the record should be emailed to the Director of Planning who will present. They should have been emailed to the Director of Planning who will present to the mayor prior to the opening of the hearing. I have not received any as of this time. Review of the public notices. Mr. Manuel will enter for the record the certification of the publication that the hearing was properly advertised in the October 8th and October 15th, 2021 editions of the Maryland Independent Newspaper. Can you verify that, Mr. Manuel?
Madam Mayor, that is correct.
Okay, and there is attached to the agenda summary of the staff report and staff recommendations. The Planning Commission recommendations. On September 7th, the Planning Commission found the DRA was consistent with the town's 2020 comprehensive plan and unanimously made a recommendation to the Town Council to approve the application after the Town Council public hearing. Are there any questions at this time from council? And to verify, Mr. Manuel, there was, and Ms. Phipps, there were no written documentations that were received?
Madam Mayor, at this time, we have received no written communications.
Okay, thank you very much. And Ms. Phipps, you indicated that no one has signed up to speak. But at this time, I will open the floor to see if there is anyone who would like to speak on this topic, which is the Heritage Green DRA amended review for findings of consistency with the 2020 comp plan. Do I have any speakers? Hearing none. Are there any additional questions by council? All right, so seeing that we have not received any written comments. Oh, Mr. Councilman Jenkins? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to make sure there was no public speakers before we had questions or I had a question. So I assume nobody's going to speak. I just had a question and then a comment. I know the Charles County Commissioners had their public hearing on the revised DRA on October 20th, and I was trying to remember whether, and I think it was approved. And I'm asking a question, were there any additional comments or that were made during that public hearing that we should be aware of?
I will pass that to Director Harrington.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. For the Charles County Commissioners' public hearing that they held on October 20th, it was approved by a majority vote. There was one Commissioner that was absent and one that voted in opposition. And they did move to close the hearing and to approve the DRA as submitted. The only opposition comment that I heard was regarding the water situation between the town and the county, which of course we are working through and at this time is being handled by staff at the county and town level.
All right, any other further questions from council or another one? Go ahead.
Please, thank you again. I guess just maybe a question within a comment or vice versa. I noticed in the revised DRA, there was a lot of discussion and documentation about different roads and different intersection improvements. And I noticed there were some additional improvements that the state highway may require or will require for this project, Maryland 6 and 301, and then Heritage Green Parkway and 301. So I was pleased to see that because obviously this has an impact on traffic, could have an impact on traffic throughout the town, not just on Charles Street. And then I, and then, so I was glad to see that, and I think that is important. And then, this is probably a pie in the sky and probably way too late, but I was always curious about the, any opportunity about a roundabout where Charles Street hits Willow Avenue and where the new access road will be for the first entrance into Heritage Green. Because I know there's, in the county's transportation priorities letter from last March, there was a proposed roundabout at 488 and Ready of Station Road. So I didn't know if any opportunity or option for that, that versus just a normal, quote, "signalized" intersection. Just a comment, I'm sure it's too late, but I just thought I'd throw it out there.
And I'll speak on behalf of this, but the town, we haven't had any discussions on a roundabout with Heritage Green nor with SHA. It may be a little late in the game to talk about that, but then again, we haven't really focused on any of the major improvements that are going to be happening with the traffic at that intersection. As SHA has pointed out in the past, that they are waiting for the warrants to be met before they would entertain any improvements such as signalization or perhaps a roundabout at that location. It's certainly something that, we have another meeting with Heritage Green tomorrow. We can bring up that comment and see if that's been addressed at any point in the past. And if there is any interest in trying to pursue that moving forward, so I can certainly bring that to their attention.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? All right, seeing none, seeing that we have not received any comments from the public and upon recommendation from our town attorney, I would like to close the record today. Okay, Councilman Charles.
Sorry, sorry. Yeah, so Director Harrington, I know you said that the water issue is being worked out between staff, between the town and the county. Could you just give us a basic idea of what is being discussed and how we're getting to a solution there?
That's not actually my area. I will defer to either Bobby or to Brent on that topic since they are handling that directly.
Okay, thanks.
Brent, would you like me to address that?
Yeah, Bobby, go ahead, please.
Okay. We have had numerous ongoing meetings and there really is almost a three-way negotiation between the state, of course, MDE, Maryland Department of the Environment, the county and the town. Here lately, the state took a pass and basically indicated to us that we had to work this out between the county and the town. We have been working with them very diligently and agreed to a, an upgraded water line that would be enlarged, the 12-inch permitted water line that's coming down St. Charles Parkway. And we would change that to a 16-inch main coming down St. Charles Parkway. There are three 12-inch water lines that all come together there. And we would take that as, instead of the 12-inch that's already permitted, we're working between the county and MDE right now to change that water line to a 16-inch line. The idea with that 16-inch line was that it would allow the town to purchase all of its additional water through the county through probably several means. One being maybe some of the county's appropriation or most likely from water that is purchased ultimately from WSSC, which is coming out of the dam up on the Patuxent River in Laurel. So it's all surface water from WSSC. The possible future opportunity would be if the county, possibly with the town together, would enter into a surface treatment facility of its own and could therefore buy water from either a county-owned surface water treatment facility or a jointly-owned surface water treatment facility. But we have agreed to pay for a percentage. Currently, that percentage would be divided 50% to St. Charles, 25% to Charles County, and 25% to La Plata. But that upgrade is actually in the hundreds of thousands, not in the millions. So it is a, it's a fairly large change order to change the size from 12 to 16. But the idea is that we would then bring that down, enlarge the line that goes into the Parklands neighborhood, and then we would connect at Tillman Lake. So we would actually build a water line around the, and maybe some of you all know where the gate is that interconnects Tillman Lake with Laurel Springs. We would come right around the road there and then basically go through the fence under the power line and over into the Parklands neighborhood and tie in right in the Parklands neighborhood. The goal is to buy up to a million gallons a day at that location. And then any other future additional water that would be needed, we would eventually tie into the county where that 16-inch line comes down Rosewick Road and eventually tie in on Rosewick Road at the county town line on Rosewick Road. So that's, that's the goal. Some of the things that we're working on right now would be trying to come up with a pricing scenario and what the cost of that water is. Because currently, there's a differential between what WSSC charges the county and what the county charges its residents for water and what the town charges its residents for water. So we're trying to work on what is an even swap and how we would actually buy water from the town. The county is also interested in providing water to some of its neighborhoods south of La Plata. Those would include Mary Ellen Park, Ellenwood, Newtown Estates, Bellouton Woods, and Chapel Point Woods. And we've been working with them on that interconnection as well. The idea there would be that we wouldn't charge them a distribution fee for the water going through our system, but they would actually provide the water to us for those neighborhoods on the top side. We would just be the conduit for that. But then, the same, you know, in the negotiations, the same would be true for the WSSC water. If we bought water from WSSC, we wouldn't be charged for the distribution through the county system. We would just be bringing the water through. So there's a lot of, lot of different pieces in this, in the negotiations that are going on. We have had very, what I would say, good faith negotiations back and forth. The Maryland Department of the Environment is currently fast-tracking the permit to increase the water line size, and we are on board with that for them because ultimately we need the interconnection between the town and the county, which is a positive step. There are some things, as I would tell you, that we do have to work out as far as pricing is concerned and as far as, you know, how much we're buying at certain points and those kind of things. But we're having weekly meetings with the county to try and work those out. And so negotiations are ongoing. We do have another meeting this Friday.
Okay, Councilwoman Brian Ward.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Stahl, in the plan that you have for water allocations up to 2025, Heritage Green was included in that already, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
If you look at the chart, you'll see they're, they're on the chart and it is a part of that. We still have approximately 1,000 EDUs left within the current appropriation. And, you know, our intention would be, in the short term, probably in the next five to 10 years, we would have the connection in the Parklands neighborhood, which would allow us to buy up to a million gallons per day from either the county or WSSC. That certainly would take us well into the future. So I'm, I think it's just a matter of, you know, working out some of the logistics on how we do that. But we do have other arrangements with the county where they bill us on a monthly basis. And I think that those parts of the billing and all of those kind of things aren't really the challenge. The challenge is really the allocation of cost and how we do that.
Okay, any other questions from council? All right, hearing none. And since we have not received any written comments and upon recommendation from our town attorney, I would like to close the record today. And at this time, I would also like to close this hearing. The next thing on our agenda is I would like to entertain a motion from council to approve the amended and restated development rights and responsibility agreements for Heritage Green as presented. Do I have someone who would like to make a motion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we accept the amended and restated DRA for Heritage Green.
Thank you, Councilwoman Brian Ward. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Goldsmith. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman Jenkins and Councilman Challenger, were you both ayes?
Yes.
Have my mic turned off, aye.
Okay, motion carries, 5-0. Thank you very much, appreciate that. Moving on to our next item is our public forum. If I have, if there's anyone out in the audience who would like to speak, please let you, please let us know by stating your name, your address, and whether you're in the Incorporated Town Limits. And please try to limit your comments to three minutes or less. Do I have anybody who would like to speak this evening?
I'd like to say something, Mayor.
Okay, go ahead.
Mike Runfola, 113 Morris Drive, within the Incorporated Town Limits. At a work session on October 12th, I referenced a November 2020 Town Council meeting where I recommended a non-binding survey of residents regarding four annexation requests. Mayor James stated this could be placed on the town website at no cost. I offered and submitted a draft completely neutral in design, and after submitted, submitting, she did have a 180-degree change of heart. Not may have, as she stated two weeks ago, she actually did. So I had it published in the Southern Maryland News of January 1st, 2021. As a result, three of four of these annexations passed without the benefit of direct input of the residents. The fourth annexation request, the Hub, which has not come up for a vote yet, was treated in this, in this way. Description, 449 acres heading west from where Rosewick Road and Route 301 intersect and eventually south exiting onto 225 near Quailwood Parkway. Proposed, three neighborhoods of single-family duplex townhouses and apartments totaling 1,600 units with office, civic, and retail. The residents were asked to respond for or against. Mayor James responded to my comments two weeks ago stating she wasn't certain that this was legal. As she already knows, I've checked with Attorney General of Maryland, such a non-binding survey is perfectly legal. And this town has also surveyed residents in the past, and she was informed of this in the past. She also had some concerns about the expense. At the November 2020, at the November 2020 Town Council meeting, she herself stated that there would be no expense. Besides, the Hub officials, among other commitments, has already agreed to such a survey and pay all the expenses. Several years ago, prior to the Super Walmart annexation, I requested from Mayor Hale to respond in writing to my request to have non-binding survey of residents with published results prior to the Town Council vote. He felt it so important that he had the town clerk, Daniel Manley, personally deliver his response to my home, and he read it aloud at the Town Council meeting. The only problem was, what he read aloud purposely omitted the following. Quote, "You may feel this is non-binding, but once the information is out there, how the number of people responded, it would be very difficult to make a non-binding on the council." My point exactly, how telling is this? As a result of that Town Council stubbornness, they passed on the Super Walmart annexation request, three to two, without the survey. An expensive referendum occurred overturning that decision by a margin of two to one, needlessly costing the residents of this town well in excess of $30,000. I'm attempting to avoid this from happening again. And in this case, we have a petitioner who's already agreed to this survey and to pay all the expenses. We've heard from Mayor James on this. The people of this town now need to hear from all of the other Town Council members. Also, I'd like to know when the repaving of the streets that were discussed at last week's meeting are going to start. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Runfola. Is there anyone else who would like to speak this evening? Okay, I will close the public forum at this time. Chief, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Kelly, is it possible for me to share my screen?
Sure, give it a shot.
That's not what I was looking for, my fault.
It's a good topic, though.
Yeah. All right, I'm gonna have to, technical difficulty on my end. Kelly, are you able to share my report up there?
Let me make sure I got the right one. Sorry, scrolling. Hold on just one second.
Thank you, Kelly.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I apologize for the technical difficulty. Kelly, can you go to the first slide or is there a way I can control it?
You may be able to take control. Or you can just let me know and I'll, I'll change it.
All right, that's probably best, save, save us some time. In September 2021, the La Plata Police Officers responded to 1,169 calls for service. This is the fourth consecutive month officers eclipse the 1,000 calls in a month mark. As you can see, as we came out of COVID a little bit, calls for service continue to go up. A lot of these are domestic-related, mental health-related, and overdose-related. If you go to the next slide, Kelly, I appreciate it. Our officers handled 22 Part 1 crimes in the month of September as well as 26 Part 2 crimes. The agency experienced a case closure rate of 44.45%. Kelly, I'm sorry, can you, next slide? In September, officers wrote 66 Maryland traffic citations, 210 warnings, and 25 repair orders. We historically have had a citation warning ratio of about 25/75. This month, it was 29.5 to 70.5. I like it this way, this shows that our officers are using great discretion on car stops. We write citations for the most serious offenses, speeding in excess of about 15 over, red light violations, running school bus lights, and then things like driving while suspended, while impaired. Can we go to the next slide? There were 16 reportable collisions in September. Our reportable collisions are defined as when a vehicle or vehicles collide and someone is injured or one of the vehicles needs to be towed. All other collisions are handled through an exchange of information. Next slide, Kelly. During the month of September, large stores and the Charles Regional Medical Center accounted for 117 calls for service. And you go to the next slide as well, Kelly. During the month of September, hotels accounted for 24 calls for service. Calls at the large box stores, the hospital, and hotels accounted for 12% of the month's total call volume, which is about average, usually runs between 12 and 17%. Next slide. Thank you, Kelly. Detective PFC Royce received the Maryland Chiefs of Police Award for Exceptional Policing at the annual meeting of the Chiefs and Sheriffs in Ocean City. The award was presented to Officer Royce from the Maryland Sheriff's Association President Troy Berry and the Maryland Chiefs Association President John Neskey of Bowie, and of course, Governor Larry Hogan. We're proud of David and all his work. Next slide. Training, Officer Logan Warren attended Radar-Lidar School Training hosted at the Baltimore County Police Academy. The Baltimore County Police Academy is known for its traffic training, and they do not charge allied officers any fees to have officers trained at the Baltimore County Police Academy in traffic safety. Detective Sergeant Matthew Norris attended the Narcotics Investigators Conference in Ocean City. Lieutenant Payne and I attended the Maryland Chiefs of Police, Maryland Sheriff's Association's Annual Professional Development Seminar in Ocean City. And PFC James Buckles attended instructor development training at the Baltimore County Police Academy, and that too was of no charge. Next, please, Kelly. Community events, our Honor Guard participated in the 27th Annual Blue Mass at St. Patrick Church in Washington, DC. Other agencies that were there included the Charles County Sheriff's Department, the Prince George's County Police Department, and the Metropolitan Police Department, among others. Next slide, please. Our officers and public safety cadets provided traffic and pedestrian safety controls at the Walk to In Alzheimer's since the last time we met. Next slide, please, Kelly. LPBD officers were joined by Mayor James in presenting Lowe's Home Improvement with a community policing award. Lowe's donated much-needed personal protective gear to our officers at the beginning of the pandemic when we were scrambling and had very little. They came through and provided us with what we needed to handle calls safely, and it was greatly appreciated. Next slide. Our officers stopped by Mary Matula Elementary School's trunk-or-treat event. It wasn't as well-attended this year as normal, but I think COVID had a lot to do with that. Kelly, if you don't mind, next slide. Our public safety cadets participated in the first annual Clark's Run Walk, and they made snow cones. We will be on hand at the steeplechase event on Saturday to do the same thing. Next slide, Kelly. Each month, LPBD provides public awareness information through social media. We featured in September and through October domestic violence awareness, suicide awareness, and theft from auto awareness through our 9:00 PM routine. Next slide, please. We concluded our fall home small business video mini-grant process. We received approximately 10 applications. All 10 will be honored. To date, there are over 100 mini-grad awards. Upcoming events, Trick or Treat Trail will be assisting with pedestrian traffic control on October 30th. We have Halloween, October 31st, and we will have extra officers out there for high visibility. And we had the Veterans Day Parade coming up, November 7, 2021. And we also have No Shave November coming up. So if anybody wants to participate with this, join our team, however we'd like to do it, we'd love to have you. We'll get some more information out here soon. So Kelly, I really appreciate your help. Any questions you have for the police department?
Council, do you have any questions for the chief? Councilman Golds.
Yes, I noticed the statistic there, the hospital, 53 calls. Do we have an officer on station at all times down there? And how do you account, I guess, when it, what makes a call while the person's already at the hospital?
Chief, you're muted.
Thank you. A call is anytime someone picks up the phone and calls us, or one of our officers, what we call routines, they see something and they interact. The vast majority of those calls were handled by patrol officers when Officer Buckles was not at the hospital, or our secondary officers. We have Officer Buckles, who is assigned there 40 hours a week. We have 40 hours of overtime there each week for our officers. So the coverage is not all the time, but it is quite frequent. But the vast majority of those calls are when no one is assigned there by our agency. Like any hospital, it's just not Charles Regional, any hospital, the emergency room, especially that has handles people in mental health crisis, police are there quite frequently.
Just shocking to see that many.
That's probably about an average month for us at the hospital. It just, it is what it is, you know, and they're in town, and we're here to serve them.
Hi, Councilman Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief, first, thanks for the revised formatting of your report. I like, I think the graphics really help in terms of looking at trends, and so I appreciate your effort. I know it's probably a little extra work for you, but thank you for doing that. Thanks again also for all the outreach you do to the community. That, again, is very gratifying, but is very, very good process to continue that. And I just had one quick question. You said that there were, I think that slide said there was 66 or 16 traffic citations. Could you just enumerate what, other than speeding, what occurred?
Well, in the course of a day, our officers respond to all sorts of different types of calls. Some of those are for people who were driving while impaired. We had three driving while impaired arrests in September. We ask our officers to be vigilant when school buses are out on the roads, and that's non-negotiable. You run school bus lights, you're gonna get a ticket, and it's not cheap, and it shouldn't be cheap. If someone causes an accident by running a red light, chances are they're gonna get a citation. But I like the fact that, you know, if you're in a neighborhood and you're doing 15 over, you're probably gonna get a citation. If you're doing 10 over, and the officer just wants you to slow down a little bit, you're probably gonna get a warning. But I really like the ratio that we have. I think it shows our folks are very good at discretion. And that bottom number there, there was 168 car stops in September. So 168 times our officers interacted with somebody for a traffic violation.
Thank you. Thanks for the clarification. It's just, I just want to get a better sense of what they are, and I know you have a full plate of things you do, and as you and I have discussed, one of my pet peeves is speeding and pedestrian safety. So I was just curious, has there been any uptick or whatever in that particular violation?
Well, there's some grant money that's coming down from the State Highway Office for pedestrian safety. So we have some officers who are trained on how to be pedestrians. I don't know why you need training for that, but how to be pedestrians, and we should be running some enforcement on Charles Street with that. And I think if you look at this chart, you'll see during COVID, we were doing our best to have our officers limit interactions. When it started to clear up a little bit, first place we went was the neighborhood. So you see the uptick in enforcement, and now you can see we've removed most of the restrictions for traffic stops, and you can see there's more activity out there by our folks. That, and we have run quite a bit of details with the Charles County Sheriff's Office for crime issues in certain neighborhoods, and car stops is part of what we do.
And again, thank you, and not to overemphasize enforcement, because the other part of the equation for speeding and pedestrian safety is engineering and education. So I was just looking at the one part of it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Goldsmith, are you just holding up your hand, or do you have another question?
I forgot to take it down.
All right, I just wanted to make sure I'm not skipping. Does anyone else have anything for the chief? All right, chief, I do have a quick question for you. I say quick, we'll see how quick the answer is. You indicated that PFC Buckles is 40 hours a week, and then you do 40 hours overtime with the other officers. At one point, there was discussion with the hospital of securing another police officer there through an MOU. Has there been any progress made on that?
Well, we have our part of the MOU done. We have not heard back from the hospital, so we're hoping. We'd like to have the second position there, it is needed. While somebody's there, that means patrol officers are not responding to the hospital, they're out in the neighborhoods where they should be, or in the business district. Our contract, as we sent it over, was for a 75/25 split, so the second officer should be as close to cost-neutral as can be for the town.
Okay, thank you very much for that update. All right, thank you, great report.
Thank you, Kelly.
Next on the agenda is Director Harrington.
All right, good evening again. Kelly, I don't know if you got my email. I can share my screen if not.
Yeah, you should probably just go ahead and do that.
Okay. I think my weekly report is on the agenda, so I will share my screen so you can see my monthly report. Okay, hopefully you're seeing Town Council Planning Department updates?
Yes, I am.
Okay. All right, so for our development review, we had 16 submissions. We had five design review board submissions, so our November meeting is gonna be quite full. We had three forest conservation submissions. One of those was an exempt declaration of intent. We had two major site plan submissions, two minor site plan submissions, one major subdivision submission, two storm water management submissions, and one zoning confirmation. And then we had 10 resubmissions for re-reviews, or after they had reviewed comments, and we did not perform any pre-construction meetings this month. For building permits, we had, let me move this over here, nine new residential building permits, one residential solar permit, 21 residential occupancy permits, one commercial occupancy permit, five utility permits, 15 plumbing permits, 20 major facility fee permits, 12 farmers market permits, one permanent sign, and one public works permit, for a total of 86. For code enforcement, we had a busy month working out some behind-the-scenes things. I know that Aaron had quite a few court cases that were canceled and pushed back, so that's been a little bit frustrating on our end. He did not do any new citations. He did issue 18 warnings and sent 11 violation notices. We received 19 new rental licenses, which brings our total for 2021 to 228. He performed 15 rental inspections, five rental re-inspections for failure to comply with the code. He removed 83 temporary signs, and again, all of those were from outside businesses that were dropping signs within our right-of-way. I know it looks like a high number, but we tend to get businesses from outside of the town that will drop about 60 to 70-plus down the 301 median. So he goes out and pulls those, which makes that number a little bit high. And then just a reminder about our temporary signage and temporary outdoor seating. We have not changed anything at this time, so for the temporary sign moratorium, it was continued through January 31 of 2022. We are still working through the sign code to address some of those issues, and the temporary outdoor seating was continued through December 31 of 2021. And as always, I reiterate that flag signs are considered a distracting device and are not permitted in the town. For future meetings, we do have a Planning Commission meeting on November 2. We have two public hearings, one for the Hospital Zoning Text Amendment, and one for a single-lot annexation located at 10411 La Plata Road, and a revisit to the special exception for 6685 Crane Highway. They did submit a traffic impact study as requested by the Planning Commission, so we are going to re-review that before proceeding forward with the Board of Appeals. And one thing that I have, did not note on here, and actually, I just discovered this yesterday, is that I may have a zoning map error located over in between West Hawthorne Road and Oriole Lane, so I'm going to bring that up with the Planning Commission and discuss that as well. For the Design Review Board, that's being held on November 10 at virtual again, we're gonna be discussing the Design Review Board process update. I'm currently working through some edits from the comments that I received by the Council. I want to thank you all again for your time and attention on that. We also have submissions for 6670 Crane Highway, 6640 Crane Highway, 6685 Crane Highway, 417 Charles Street, and 100 Kent Avenue. And one thing I do want to point out is that four of these five submissions would be considered under the administrative process with this new update, and would not require Design Review Board approval. There's signage of refacing of different signs, and one's for an accessory shed. For some matters of information, still working through our development review and permit preparation manual, we've had a lot of changes in our process as of late with outsourcing our storm water management reviews, and our water and sewer reviews, and just how we're kind of handling everything. So I want to make sure that this is completely updated and as current as possible, so that there's no confusion, and I'm not having to update it constantly. Again, Town FAQs are updated on the website, and more importantly, we're looking at draft code revisions. I've started with the sign code in Chapter 191. That draft has been completed and sent to staff for initial review, including the La Plata Business Association. We're updating Chapter 117 Health and Sanitation. That draft has been completed, but we're also gonna be working with the Keep La Plata Beautiful team, which Kelly Phipps has been a big help on that, and getting some guidance from the town attorney on how we can improve that process and make sure that it's following our Keep La Plata Beautiful and Green Team initiatives. We also need to look at Chapter 173 for the subdivision chapter. The biggest part of this is really updating the process and expiration dates for subdivisions, as well as our school seat allocation policy. We've been getting more and more questions on school seat tracking, and how this is gonna work, and how many we have available. So we really need to crack down and make sure that that is up to speed, since we have all this new development on our horizon. Looking at Chapter 170 and 186 as well, that ties into our subdivision chapter, and making sure that everything is up to date with what our initiatives are with the town. Not listed on here also is the Adequate Public Facilities Ordinance that I've been asked to take a look at. I did reach out to Charles County. They told me that I was welcome to use their Adequate Public Facilities Ordinance as a template, so I'm going to look at that, make my initial edits, and then I'll get back with the county, just to discuss some of their processes and how they're updating theirs. And then for the downtown region, after some of our strategic planning meetings, it became apparent that we should probably look at creating a form-based code for a zone specifically for the downtown core. This wouldn't be applied to the entire town at this point, it would kind of act as an overlay, but not really. It would actually be the zone for that specific area, and it would kind of be a trial run to see how a form-based code would work in the town. Form-based code is much more flexible. It allows for a mix of uses, and really only focuses on building form, building height, different things along those lines. So it's gonna be interesting to see how that plays in, but I think that that will be essential in helping us to redevelop our downtown, and really boost our economic development potential. So that is something that I've started working on, and I want to thank Councilman Dave Jenkins for sending me some links. I know he took a webinar on form-based codes, so that was very helpful to take a look at those as well. And that's all I have for this month, if you have any questions for me.
Thank you very much for that very thorough report. Do I have any questions from the council? I do have one comment. I absolutely love the streamlining of, proposed streamlining of the Design Review Board. I think that is awesome, and I hope that the DRB, the members see the value in that, and how it really saves time for the applicant, as well as staff and them. So we're not having them come in front of the DRB, the planning, and go back to the DRB. So kudos to you for really streamlining that, and I hope that at the next DRB, the members do see the value of that. Councilman Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Harrington, just an observation and a comment. Thanks for including the Green Team policies in your code rewrite. That, that's important, that we continue that momentum, and I know all the work that team did, so it needs to be ingrained in our processes. So thanks for doing that, and thanks for the report. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I just want to point out that this, this will kind of be applied, and that's why you'll see that we're redoing basically the entire town code. But the streets and sidewalks, looking at complete streets, bicycle, pedestrian facilities, making sure that everything is up to code, up to date, and in line with our initiatives that we've had through many plans, including our comprehensive plan. So it's gonna be in the subdivision chapters, streets and sidewalks, as well as our kind of code enforcement chapters with property maintenance, health, and sanitation. So you're gonna see that theme throughout these code revisions as they come to you, that we're really trying to make sure that we're covering all of those bases.
Yeah, and that's the holistic approach that's needed. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you. All right, Director Stahl, I had an old agenda, old as of last night, so I skipped you, and that wasn't done on purpose.
I saw that, and I just feel terrible.
I'm sure you thought that I did it on purpose, that, no, you know what, I'm going to end with Kevin, and you're just gonna be like the filling of the Oreo cookie right there. So I'm gonna have you go ahead and present your report.
Kelly, can you share the, my report, or do I have to share my screen?
What are you more comfortable with?
Well, I can try to share my screen. Let me see what I can do.
Okay.
Please do the nail. If you get it.
Let me see what I can do here.
Yeah, out. Let me see. Well, all right.
Are you here?
Yeah.
There we go.
There you go, just sharing that. I never.
Can you all see that?
No.
No? Anybody see that? No?
All right, so go back. Where's your?
I'm sorry, I don't appear to have your report.
Nice, I'm here.
Okay. It certainly was shared with council. Council, did you receive our? There we go.
There you go. Just sharing that. I, I never.
Can you all see that?
No.
No? Anybody see that? No?
All right, so go back. Where's your um?
I'm, I'm sorry. I don't appear to have your report.
Okay. It certainly was shared with council. Council, did you receive our, our monthly and our weekly report?
Okay.
No?
Hey, Bobby, I can share. I can share it if you need me to.
Okay. Do you have it?
Yeah.
How did you get it?
It's on the agenda.
That's what I thought. Okay. I, I, it was submitted. I, I was going to say I, okay.
Yeah.
It was attached.
Okay.
It was attached Monday.
Yeah.
And then I'll go to, oops, go back. And go to my share button.
There it goes. Okay.
Oops. There you go. There we go. Can everybody see that now?
Yes. I guess I'll have to work with you. Um, first of all, on streets and signs, and I'm not going to go through each individual part because it is a long uh presentation, but the one thing that I wanted to share, Mr. Runfolo had questioned when we were actually starting on the streets. And I spoke with Mr. Bean this morning, and we will be starting to pave uh middle to the latter part of next week. So he will be moving over from Charles County over to uh uh La Plata next week, and most likely will be here probably through uh Thanksgiving. So we're looking forward to the paving. Our intention is to start at the top of the list with Heritage Green Parkway. And to be honest, most likely, we will be working with uh W and W Striping to help us with traffic control because our assumption is we will be having to close one entire side of Heritage Green Parkway. And we will have it narrowed to one lane so that we have a divided uh side coming out onto uh three oh one. So both the inbound lane and the outbound lane will be on the same side while we're paving the other side. So it, it will be some congestion associated with that, and I want to make that uh statement publicly, but we will be working with W and W Striping and of course with State Highway Administration to help us with traffic control while we're doing that paving. Heritage Green Parkway, as you saw from the list, will be from three oh one up to the farthest entrance to the uh uh to the shopping center. And that will tie into where we completed the paving on Heritage Green Parkway the last time. There will be two phases to it. We will have to mill both the inside and the outside curb on both lanes. So there will be a, a phase of milling, and then once we clean up that side, then there will be a phase of paving. Uh, so um it's, it's going to be shut down on one side. Hopefully, we complete that side. We may actually decide to mill uh one side, shift over, mill the other side so that once we start paving, we actually complete the paving. But we're going to have to have that a little bit flexible in that situation as to where we need to, where we need to go and whether or not we have the ability to start paving at the same time. So all of the rest of those are, are very simple repairs. Uh, Parks and Recreation have uh continued to uh have rentals throughout the time. Solid Waste Management, we've uh given out forty new, forty-nine new containers in the last month. So things continue to grow in La Plata. We did forty-nine uh bulk pickups as well. The thing that I want to, we're, we're winding down on grass uh cutting, but loose leaf pickup did begin the week of the eleventh of September, and that will continue through the middle of December. So please uh see the schedule that we have posted for loose leaf, but it is ongoing at this point. We um with regard to the utilities with water distribution, we did thirty-nine uh distribution work orders, including meter box and valve repairs. Um, we did work with the contractor down at Willow Lane. Uh, the entrance is ongoing uh down at Willow Lane for Heritage Green, and they will be widening Willow Lane on the school side. And so we had to move the hydrant down there, and we had to install another valve. Uh, but we did work diligently with the contractor and got that work completed. Uh, hydrant testing was also completed this month, and we have about twelve to fifteen hydrants that we still need to paint. We moved on with sewer uh collection and done quite a few sewer collection. The one thing I would point out on water distribution, we did have a big water main break in front of the courthouse where we did have to shut a lane down uh on uh Charles Street. And I would just like to say publicly, I really appreciated the help that we received from the State Highway Administration uh with traffic control that evening. It certainly helped and facilitated us in getting the repair made quickly. Um, we had some challenges trying to shut the system off, but the water line that we repaired right there in front of the courthouse was approximately a hundred years old. So we felt uh good that we were able to get in there and repair that one section of pipe and have everything and have the water restored by about nine o'clock that evening. So it was, it was a real positive, and I think that my guys and the State Highway people had done a fabulous job. Uh, the Mueller upgrade has become a little bit challenging. Uh, through uh the twentieth, uh, we had done one thousand ninety-five upgrades out of nineteen hundred and eighty or approximately two thousand that we need to do. Uh, we have sent out two letters, um but we are still only at about fifty-five percent of where we need to be. Um, I am going to work with the Public Information Officer and to come up with some mechanisms to try and put out more notices. But we really need the council and the mayor's help to put the word out that we need the citizens' help. I know there was concern about the um, the letters. Um, we are going to um lose our Keystone people for a little while, as you can see. Um, they just don't have enough uh of the uh the people who have made appointments to continue to have full-time personnel. And so they're going to try to pull people for a few weeks until we can catch up with people registering for appointments. Um, we do need to post the infographic that we sent out with the last email on social media, and we really need to emphasize why it's important and what they need to do. And, you know, you see that in the suggestions there. But it is, it is becoming harder at this point to get people to do something and to get them to, to help us out. Uh, with respect to the wells, next slide, please. Um, we pumped about twenty-five thousand eight hundred and five, twenty-five million eight hundred and five thousand gallons of water during the month of September. Um, however, with the meters, we're only registering about eleven million gallons, and that's because of the poor reporting that we're getting from the meters. So it is challenging for us because we're having to go out and to do a lot of manual reads and go out and to pick up those readings. And so these upgrades are tremendously important for us. So I want you to see the differential there of what we pumped versus what we sold. That number, the differential, should be in the ten to fifteen percent range to be reasonable. It's not even close. So we, we do still have that major problem. The interesting piece of this, and what I'd really like to point out, is the fact that the amount of gallonage that we've pumped out into our system and the amount of water that we're treating at the wastewater treatment plant is as close as I've ever seen it in my fourteen years here. We're pumping about eight hundred thousand gallons per day, and we're treating a little over eight hundred thousand gallons per day. For the month of September, we actually averaged nine hundred and twenty-five thousand gallons, but that number, because of the dry weather, has continued to decrease. And so we're less than a hundred thousand gallons difference between the water pumped and the water treated. Normally speaking, we would average somewhere in the three hundred thousand gallon differential. We've been treating, you know, pumping somewhere between seven and eight hundred thousand, and we've been treating somewhere between a million and a million one per month. Right now, we're very, very close. That's, I, I'd like to think that that's a sign that our uh INI has uh or inflow and infiltration has decreased and that we're not having as much, and that some of the fixes that we've been working on throughout the town have been helping. Most likely, it's because of dry weather and that we're not getting the inflow and infiltration because we've been fairly dry. So uh the month of October has been dry. We had about two inches of rain last night, which is really some of the wettest we've had for the entire month of October. As you can see from the wells, some of the repairs that we've made, um, we did have an inspection by M D E. So they did come around and inspect all of our wells and all of our water distribution system, and things went well with that. Um, if you could move to the next slide, please. With the pump stations, we've had uh several different callouts and and repairs that were necessary um at some of the pump stations, and you can see those as attached. Um, Willow Lane was an after-hours call that I came out to uh one night. It called out for a high wet well. And of course, with the size and the volume that is necessary to be pumped at Willow Lane, it does get my attention very quickly, and I personally responded to that call just to ensure uh we got things straight. Uh, if we could move to the next slide, please. Um, we've done some repairs um throughout the wastewater treatment plant. Um, but I want to point out two things, uh especially. Today, we had a, we hired a new uh Assistant Director of Utility, uh Assistant Director of Operations for Utilities, uh Kirk Parks, and he is a licensed wastewater and water operator and also a licensed superintendent for both water and wastewater, and he will be starting with us on November fifteenth. Uh, we look forward to that. He was, uh, he is currently employed at the, by the federal government at Indian Head, and um he was previously employed by Maryland Environmental Service and um has some experience around our plant because of his involvement with Maryland Environmental Service. So we were excited to bring Kirk on board. He did sign with us today, and it's going to start the fifteenth. So I think that was excellent news for us, and will certainly be able to provide us and provide me with more time to focus on some of the things like the new pump station um at Southwest Quadrant and the upgrades at the wastewater treatment plant, which we look forward to very soon. The other thing um uh that we had down there, as you can see, these are ongoing repairs. Um, DR and I were working on uh several things today to try and uh get a new seal for the sludge pump, for instance. So there's constant repairs going on down there. If you could, next slide, please. Uh, stormwater, it has been busy. Uh, as you know, with the Saint Mary's and Centennial Street and Centennial East repairs, they were completed. We repaved that area. And of course, on the paving list, um, we will be doing an overlay of Saint Mary's Avenue from Centennial Street, the entire intersection out to Charles Street. So we will be doing that in the near future. Uh, we worked at Heritage Green Parkway near three oh one. As you can see, that is ongoing at this point. We are currently um working right up around the stormwater management pond at the bank, and we will be replacing the twenty-four inch line all the way up the edge of Heritage Green Parkway. We also have been out following up on a number of the previously attended to challenges. And as you can see from the next slide, if we could, um, we did a repair uh up at uh Charleston Terrace, Charleston Court, and we dug out the pipe. And that is actually the picture of the pipe that we dug out. So uh that's, that just shows you what we're seeing all the way around throughout the town of La Plata. That's what our pipes look like. And you can tell Charleston Court um was installed or was built in the late eighties. And you see what's left of that pipe that was installed in the late eighties. It, it, and to be honest, um, we, you know, we're, we're part of the culprit. So, uh, you know, with the salt that we apply during winter time, it certainly um doesn't help with the degradation of that uh infrastructure. The galvanization on that steel um is certainly uh eaten up quite quickly with the use of the amount of road salt that everybody's putting on the roads these days. So just wanted to point that out. And if you look at the next slide, please, you can actually see, this is um, uh, this is a picture. And you see right there behind that um uh collection box where the sinkhole had actually sunk completely in. Um, we had that barricaded off, but that's what it was before. And we went in and fixed that and regraded and replaced the pipe all the way down to the box uh down over the hill. So we installed about a hundred and fifty feet of uh twenty-four inch uh stormwater pipe in that location. So those, those are some challenging issues. Um, we are currently working on submitting our uh National Pollution Discharge Elimination System Permit report for the uh, and that has to be submitted by the end of October. So we have been working diligently to get that submitted. And we are currently working on trying to get the design done on the upgrades that are necessary for the rest of the uh, uh, the upgrades that are due before the end of two thousand twenty-five. If we could, we could move to the next slide, please. Um, we've done some uh a number of work orders for vehicle maintenance. We have uh DR and and his guys are very busy working all over uh doing repairs and maintenance. Um, we actually, um, he built a concrete pump for us. We had gotten a, a screw pump that we, was given to us by Charles County as part of the uh gravity belt thickener that we installed. And we were able to convert that pump into a concrete pump, and we've been using that pump to actually pump the flowable fill around the stormwater pipes after we've completed it. So um we've been utilizing that, and DR and Danny actually fabricated that whole system. So we put that in place, and it's been very usable. Can we move to the next slide, please? Um, facilities maintenance, uh, you can see on here some of the different uh things that we've been working on. We're working on upgrading the existing pole lights to LED. Um, of course, the bathroom facilities are closed for the season. Um, we could move to the next slide, please. The um rental properties certainly keep us busy with all of the different uh ones that we have. Uh, we're hopeful to get uh the one oh seven property re-rented here soon. Of course, and one eighteen is ready for rent, so we're hopeful to get both of those properties with new um tenants here very, very soon. The other thing that we're diligently working on where it says train station, that's actually to repair the caboose, and we're looking to both fix the inside and paint the inside of the caboose, and then next spring, paint the exterior of the caboose. Uh, all of the fire extinguishers have been updated. And if we could move to the next slide, please. Um, the, one of the good things that we have moving forward is that the Southwest Quadrant Pump Station, the bids are due this Friday. And we will be opening the bids and reading the bids aloud for the Southwest Quadrant Pump Station at two o'clock at Town Hall. So we look forward to that to see if we can't get that, and the goal is to bring that to you all um in next month's uh business meeting, uh and hopefully we can select and award a contract to a vendor. So we're working on that diligently. The other thing that we're doing um is we are working on the Dude Solutions implementation, and Kristin uh Damar has been heading that up for us, and so we've all been trained in work order management. And the implementation. And we are now working closely with Spatial Systems to implement our G I S data transition. To the new system. And so that's working well. And we're looking forward to some more training on the first of November. And that is my report for the month. If anyone has any questions, I would be more than happy to answer. And I apologize, I didn't turn my camera on. Sorry.
Now.
Yes.
Thank you, Director Stahl. What questions, if any, or comments does Council have? Councilman Jenkins.
Thank you, Director Stahl. Thanks for doing those street signs because that's very timely. I'd gotten a couple of. Neighbors who were. In my ear talking about those. So thanks for stepping up and. Being proactive on the street sign. That's very helpful. Just a question on the meter replacement. I made the wrong assumption that. Many, many, many meters needed replacement and that's not necessarily the case. So I attempted to work with an H O A. And I got a lot of pushback. Saying that they didn't need it. So I, so. How can I or how can we assist you by focusing on what. Areas need the meter replacement?
The sad thing is, Councilman Jenkins, they are. Throughout the town, there aren't specific areas. Where the meters, we have, for instance, we have less of a problem at Steeplechase. Because most of those meters are fairly new down in Steeplechase. The challenging neighborhoods are those that are more than five years old. And what we've had the problem with is that the meters, the batteries have not been lasting. Like the twenty year lifespan that they've said. And so what we're doing and going here, we're not actually replacing the meter. We're replacing the node in the meter. This is about a five minute job. The crews are in and out very, very quickly. We're scheduling. These upgrades in the evenings. We're scheduling them on Saturdays. I had crews working all over the place on Saturdays, try, all this past Saturday was a good example. I I met them down at twenty eight Steeplechase Drive. That we had an update right in there around nine o'clock Saturday morning. So we were, we were down there. The challenge was that we have approximately two thousand meters. That were either not responding or had not been upgraded. So we had about two thousand of the thirty six hundred meters that we have in town. That needed to be upgraded. Currently, we have upgraded, as you saw in the presentation. Approximately eleven hundred. Out of the two thousand. Meters that we had have been completed. We have less than a thousand to go. But we continue to get diminishing returns. From the left. And so what I'm asking for is for everyone to bring to people's attention. That it's important to. Pay attention to the letter, schedule the meeting. Schedule your appointment. And have it taken care of. And I, I think. You know, Councilman Challenger brought up at the last time that, you know, he had gotten the letter the first time and he got the letter and. He hadn't made the appointment, but that he was going to do that. And so that's, that's important for people to, uh-oh.
No, it, it, it just that I made, I made an incorrect assumption and you know what happens when you assume wrong, okay? That that was more, more widespread than I thought. So that's on me. So how can we help? Expedite this by focusing on those areas or those homes where we could help you. I guess, how do we do that? Or how do I do that?
What we'd like to do is to ask. The homeowners association on their websites and people who have.
Yeah.
Focus social media to please put out, they've received a letter. And what happens is there's no way for me to tell you specifically which one, we know which ones those are, but it's. It's a. It's a thousand right now that we still need to get to out of thirty six hundred. And so what we're trying to do is kind of blitz social media and it can be through homeowners associations. It can be from our social media networks that we have for us. I, I spoke to Brent today and we're going to work with the P I O. To put out public service announcements out on our social media sites to put that out. But we do need to continue to. Work with people to. You know, under, have them understand the importance of getting this upgraded. And that's why I bring up things like in today's meeting so that people understand. What the. What the importance of this is because it is something where we're not able to read the meters and that's.
Yeah, unfortunately, I just needed to be a little bit more nuanced. So what you told me helps. Thank you. And then I just had one. Final, I guess, request that knowing that pavement will start shortly on the, on town streets and knowing there will be some. Disruption of traffic. I assume we can put that out pretty quickly that people should expect this and we can kind of. Anticipate where, where, where they might be in the future as we go through paving operations.
Yes, if we, what I'll do is I'll include that as also a public service announcement through the P I O. We will have that put out as well. So we'll do both one on the meters and also one on the paving to begin. As I say, I don't, because we will sometimes. Our intention is to start at Heritage Green Parkway. Move down to Leela and tomorrow's drive and then move back in through town. And kind of address all of those as we go through town. And then kind of finish up out in the Clark's Run area as finish up on the far end and King's Grant. So that's, that's kind of the direction that we will be headed. And clearly, I will say the, the, the largest traffic concern that we have and the one place that we're going to need traffic control. And traffic control help is at Heritage Green Parkway. It's clearly one of the easier roads in town.
All right. Thank, thank you for the clarification. And again, as usual, thanks for the report and your guys do a great job. I always. The trash guys and the, the. Brinkley King guys, we always wave and talk to each other. So thanks.
Great. Thank you very much. And I, I think they. You know, they, they do a very good job. Service is clearly. What we try to take care of and. We appreciate the recognition. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any of the other council of questions or comments? Director Stahl, I have. Two questions and a comment. What is the delay on the Water Smart? It's Water Smart, right? Not Smart Water. Water Smart Portal.
They, they're, they're working on that. Kevin, do you want to, you have spoken to them last.
Yeah, that, Mayor James, that's a part of my treasures report presentation.
Please do not spoil the surprise there. So. For that. The bathrooms of facilities at Town Hall are now closed. Can you give me a real brief? I guess, update on, once we installed or had it working properly, whatever the phrase is, the timers. I know we had some people that were spending quite a lot of time in the restrooms there, perhaps sleeping there overnight. Did the timers work? And is there anything that you would tweak once we reopen them?
The timers do work. I mean, that's not really the problem. The problem was even when we, you know, the, the, the challenge was when the power would go off, the timer. It's literally a mechanical clock. It would lose time and so the times would get adjusted in that. It, it's not a self adjusting clock. So we would have to go back in and reset the time. And to be honest, a lot of times where we have a power outage in La Plata. I might not know about it or Donnie might not know about it because we don't have one at our house or it happened in the middle of the night. And so we don't realize it until. You know, we see that the lights are off or something like that. So that it does. Get off a little bit in that situation. The big problem that we were having. Was. We had a, we had one especially. Active homeless person. Who was using it as a shower facility and a sleeping facility. And he knew when the locks were going to lock. And so he would come in there and try to spend the night in there. And if somebody didn't. Run him out before the locks locked. He stayed in a nice warm facility where he would also bathe and everything else. And it became. Fairly obvious that he was living in there. One of my. The ladies that cleans for us and that cleans that facility. I know it frightened her several times because she would be cleaning and he would be coming in on her and, you know, of course. She would, of course, come and see me and I would. Ask him to leave the facility. But he would always try and come back in and do those kinds of things. Which, to be honest, was why. We, our, our original intention was to leave the bathroom facilities open. Throughout the winter, but I think that in working with special events and. I mean, Michelle may have a comment that we felt that it was just better to keep the facility closed in, except for the times. When we have special events. So.
Thank you for that. And then with the, the one comment that I have is when speaking with our P I O. What I know that the council has commented on this evening and. I, I would like to push this forward to any correspondent that goes out. We respond better to. Pictures and less words, more graphics. And you know, so. When, when it becomes too much to read, and I don't know if you do Facebook. When there's a post there that is too much, you know, you're just scrolling. But if you have a, a short pithy. That's, you know, double. Double entendre there. But if you have a pithy message there, people are more. Likely to read it. Just the facts. Boom, boom. You have this letter. Here's the deadline. This is what you need to do. Here's a picture. They'll read that. In my opinion. So just, I know our.
That's why I work with the P I O. So I'm not. Providing too much information.
Absolutely. Councilman Challenger, you raised your hand and then you took it back real quick.
Yeah, sorry. So I, I did want to publicly say that the second letter that I got from the town and. I have, I have requested an appointment, Director Stahl, so I'm going to get off your hit list. I thought the second letter was good. I mean, there's graphics on here. It might be, it might be. Still a lot of material there, but I, I think when we're talking about leak detection, I'm looking at it on my other screen. Pressure monitoring, the graphics are helpful. So hopefully this will be helpful and it shows the meters themselves and it says it's. Signed by the town and Keystone. So I, I, I do want to say, but. It's bright red. Underscore bold letters, urgent mandatory water meter upgrade notice. So. I think, I think this is better than the other one that I don't remember. And it may be the same. I don't know. Director Stahl, I apologize if it's the same, but I, I thought this one was helpful. So thank you.
That's because you didn't.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't read that.
Good. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate that. A great report, Director Stahl. Keep up the, the good work and. Accept my sincere apologies for skipping you not on purpose. I had the whole agenda. And you can take, you can tell Kelly, you can thank Kelly. She's like, oh, my goodness, you skipped Bobby. I was like, we're not on purpose. I'll let you know when it's on purpose. Thank you. All right, Mr. Greenville, you are up.
Thank you, Mayor. Kelly, can you share my treasures report or do you need me to?
Is it not showing?
I think she has it.
Thank you, Kelly. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kevin Greenville, Treasurer for the Town of La Plata. Tonight I present to you the treasures report for the month of September twenty twenty one. September marks the third month of our fiscal year twenty twenty two. As of September thirtieth, the town's general fund revenues exceeded its expenditures by approximately four point two million. Once again, this large variance is primarily attributable to the four point seven million the town received at the end of July under the American Rescue Plan Act. If you take out that four point seven million dollars, we're showing a deficit of about five hundred thousand dollars. That's to be expected. The town does not receive its first significant. Real property tax revenue until October. We received about two point four million dollars in October. Tonight, for your consideration and adoption, our two resolutions authorizing the town to enter into agreements to purchase a vehicle for the manager of inspections. And to secure third party professional services to assist the town in dispersing American Rescue Plan Act funding. Finance staff, we continue to work with Cone Resnick to complete the town's F Y twenty one financial audits. Again, they're doing the audit remotely due to, due to COVID nineteen. Draft financial statements will be complete by this Friday and we're progressing on time with an expected completion date of late November. And representatives from the audit firm will present their findings at a council meeting in January of twenty twenty two. The class compensation and benefits study being performed by municipal solutions and the organization design study by PayPoint H R continue to progress on schedule. Mueller Systems recently announced that the My Net Customer Web Portal will extend web portal accessibility until December thirty first, twenty twenty one. We posted a message with this information on the town's website and Facebook page that last week. Mayor, to answer your earlier question, the Water Smart Agreement is still pending legal final review. We had come to an agreement in principle with the parties, Mueller and Water Smart. We passed legislation authorizing that language in that agreement. Mueller came back at us with some slightly different language. We had to wait a little while for. Legal review to review it. So we're just ironing out and I'm, I'm hopeful. I had some discussions last week. With Mueller. I'm hopeful that this will get resolved quickly. And with the extension of the My Net Customer Portal, we, we should be okay to, to continue. Accessibility for, for consumers. On June twenty second of last year, the Town Council of La Plata suspended business personal property tax penalties and interest for the purpose of assisting those town businesses. Affected by the state of emergency related to COVID nineteen. The resolution was twenty seventeen and it stated the tax penalties and interest would be reinstated when the Maryland state of emergency. Related to COVID nineteen was lifted. Governor Hogan ended the COVID nineteen state of emergency on July first of this year. It was followed by a forty five day administrative grace period. Due to this, we will begin assessing business personal property tax penalties and interest on December one of twenty twenty one. Notice will be posted on the town's website and Facebook page and. We're going to send out delinquent notices on accounts on November one and we're going to add language notifying them that the. Penalty and interest will start to be assessed on December first. This concludes my treasures report for the month of September and I'd be happy to answer any questions Mayor and Council have.
Council, I'll open it up to you. Any questions for Mr. Greenville? Oh, wow. I, I thought you were this close, this close, Kevin. Councilwoman Bryant Ward.
Mr. Greenville. If we didn't have the ARPA funding and we had that five hundred thousand dollar deficit. What, what would we do? How would, how would that be covered?
Well, it, so. We do not receive our, you know, real property tax makes up about. Fifty four percent of our revenue for the year. It's not due until the county, with the county, real property taxes aren't due till September thirtieth. So we don't receive our big portion until October and we received about two point four million dollars. In the middle of October. So that's sort of why you see that deficit. It's typical. And it's typical for a lot of local governments in Maryland to, to experience that. We just haven't received that revenue yet.
So is it a deficit on accrual or is it an actual cash deficit? Isn't a cool deficit?
It, it's really, yeah, it's a cash deficit. I mean, what, what I'm looking at there, when I, when I do the, that's just a. Basically, an, an income statement on, on a cash basis. So yeah, it's nothing to worry about and it, it, it happens every year because our, our, you know, we're spending our money as we do it proportionally. So yeah, it's nothing to worry about and it, it, it happens every year because our, our, you know, we're spending our money as we do it proportionally throughout the year and we just have not received that real property tax revenue, which is our biggest source of revenue.
No worries, I wasn't worried, I just wanted to understand if we didn't have the ARPA funding, how would that have been handled, but this is accrual and not actual, so, right? Okay.
So, yeah, well, it, it is, so we don't do um, we, you know, we don't do hard closes month to month. Uh, you know, we, so when we receive the revenue in, i- is when we record it. Um, so yeah, if we were doing like hard accrual closes, we would have a lot more revenue within the real property line item and that would all be a receivable, but. Um, the treasures report that first, first page is just a um, non-acrual income statement. Um, basically on the cash basis, so there's no action we need to take, it's not like we're gonna have some huge deficit on the next month's treasures report. You'll, you'll see a, a positive variance within our uh, within our um, general fund even after subtract, subtracting out the ARPA funding.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, any other questions? Thank you very much, I appreciate your report.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right, moving on, we have some proclamations uh, this month and I'm going to start off with Councilman Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Town Council of, for your reading pleasure and I'll read it in the record. Um, a proclamation of the Town of La Plata, Maryland. Trigger treat evening in the Town of La Plata, Sunday, uh, October thirty first, two thousand twenty one, six P M to eight P M. Whereas Crane Highway, Charles Street and Washington Avenue are heavily traveled streets in this area. Making it extremely dangerous for groups of children to walk along the streets and highways after dark and whereas. It is a shared responsibility to take every possible action to protect the children of our community. And the town has for many years encouraged community parties and limited trick or treat. Treating to child's own immediate neighborhood as methods of providing safe fund for our children. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the count, by the council of the Town of La Plata that. For those wish, wishing to continue the tradition form of trigger treat evening, Sunday, October thirty first. Two thousand twenty one from six P M until eight P M shall be recognized as trigger trick, trigger treat evening in the Town of La Plata. Parents are urged to accompany their children as chaperones to not. Not allow their children to walk along Charles Street, Washington Avenue and Crane Highway and are urged. To not to allow children twelve years of age or older to trigger treat. If older children are allowed, they are asked not to wear masks. All children are encouraged to wear reflective tape or other reflective material. On their costumes so they are visible as they walk along the streets and to use flashlights to help light their way. They are also encouraged not to wear masks, which would limit their ability to easily see vehicles or other hazards as they walk from house to house. Parents are encour, are urged to share, to be sure their children are off the streets by eight P M or trigger treat evening. All those who must drive during trigger treat hours are reminded to be especially careful. Of the children who will be walking along the streets in town. Signed by the T- Town of La Plata, Mayor Janine James, Mayor. Councilman James Goldsmith, Councilman Matt, Matthew Trolinger, Councilwoman Evelyn Bryant Ward and Councilman David Jenkins.
Fantastic, thank you so much, so the ghosts and the goblins will be out this weekend. And so we just want to make sure that they're safe. Uh, we have another proclamation, it is for Municipal Government Works Month and I will have Councilwoman Bryant Moore read that one.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I think that municipal government work should be the entire year because all. Small municipal government workers are just hard at it, our government workers are just phenomenal. Um, taking on two and three different jobs for one person, I think they are from, just absolutely phenomenal and as I hear it across the. The region, other small municipalities are working equally as hard, so um, thank you to our town staff. Proclamation of the Council of the Town of La Plata, Maryland Municipal Government Works Month, November twenty twenty one. Whereas the Town of La Plata was incorporated in eighteen eighty-eight and. Whereas Maryland is home to a hundred and fifty-seven municipalities. And whereas municipal government represents the most responsive level of government, allowing citizens to have direct access to elected officials. And whereas in an effort to educate citizens about municipal government and the importance of their participation. The Town of La Plata is proud to promote municipal government awareness. And whereas municipalities have enhanced the quality of life. For their respective residents by maintaining natural and historic sites. And structures and helping to make Maryland a great place to live, work, play and explore. Now therefore, we the Council of the Town of La Plata do hereby join the Maryland Municipal League. In proclaiming November as Municipal Government Works Month in the Town of La Plata, Maryland. And do commend this observance to all of our citizens. Council of the Town of La Plata, Mayor Janine E. James, Councilman James Goldsmith, Councilman Matthew Trolinger. Councilwoman Evelyn Bryant Ward, Councilman David Jenkins.
Thank you very much and I agree with you, the workers at the municipal government, it is um. It is sometimes a thankless job, sometimes a twenty-four hour uh, a day job, but um. Yeah, I, I am glad that they are recognizing at least the month of November for the municipal government workers and thank you for reading that. Uh, we do have another proclamation uh, that I will read and it is for National First Responders Day, you know, critical. Uh, workers in our lives and this uh, probably will be October twenty eighth that we will be presenting this alongside of the county. It reads, whereas both career and volunteer individuals from police, fire, emergency, medical services. Search and rescue and other organizations in the public safety sector. Come together as first responders to aid the public in the event of an emergency. And whereas every day first responders risk their own safety and personal property in the performance of their duties. To protect our citizens and whereas the first responders are our first and best defense against all emergencies that may threaten our communities. Whatever their nature and whereas first responders are ready to aid the people twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas first responders are highly trained. Specialized workers who contribute their excellent skills for the public good. And whereas first responders are a vital part of every community who maintains safety and order in times of crisis. And volunteer in our cities and schools and now therefore be it proclaimed that the Council of the Town of La Plata does hereby recognize October twenty eighth. As National First Responders Day and it is uh, signed by myself, Mayor Janine James. Councilman Jim Goldsmith, Councilman Matt Trolinger, Councilwoman Evelyn Bryant Ward and Councilman David Jenkins, so. What I put out there, thank you to all the first responders, um, it's, it's a tough job and I know that many of them take. Those worries and stresses home and uh, we appreciate all that you do in October twenty eighth, this for you guys and women. Uh, make sure that we include everyone, so thank you for that. All right, goes on to legislation, next one is Resolution twenty-one dash thirty-six, purchase of inspection vehicle.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Town Council, this is for uh. Consideration of adoption, as you stated, Resolution twenty-one dash thirty-six. Uh, for the purpose of authorizing the town manager to enter into a contract agreement for the purchase of one. Two thousand twenty-two Ford F one fifty extended cab truck with added options.
All right, do I have a motion to accept Resolution twenty-one dash thirty-six as presented?
Madam Mayor, uh, I'll make a motion to accept. Uh, Resolution twenty-one dash thirty-six, inspection department service vehicle purchase.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Uh, any discussion? All right, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, brings us to Resolution twenty-one dash thirty-seven, uh, American Rescue Plan Act.
Yes, Madam Mayor, once again, for consideration of adoption. Uh, for the purpose of authorizing the town manager to enter into a contract agreement for, for professional services. For American Rescue Plan Act consulting services related to spending the. Coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds received under the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty one and all matters related there too.
Thank you very much, uh, do I have a motion to accept Resolution twenty-one dash thirty-seven, the American Rescue Plan Act?
Madam Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution twenty-one dash thirty-seven, American Rescue Plan Act ARPA consulting services.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
Madam Mayor, just, I, I guess it's a uh, clarification question, uh. Um, I believe the consultant did talk about with the town manager, there was some discussion about. Part of the services would be perhaps an opportunity to develop a program or an opportunity to solicit public input on how we would use the funds. I- i- is that a fair statement?
Yes, that is a fair statement.
And, and then I believe it's also confirmed by Mr. Greenville that the uh. That the ARPA funds would cover the cost of this contract.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, they, they, they would, Councilman Jenkins.
Thank you, I just wanted to be clear, thank you.
Okay, so we have, we have a motion that has been properly seconded, uh, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, brings us down to ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-nine for discussion and introduction.
This Madam Mayor, Town Council, correction, this is actually for consideration tonight, uh, we did take this matter for discussion and introduction last week at our work session. Uh, so that's a, a typo on the agenda. Uh, as you said, ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-nine and ordinance concerning zoning map amendment and amended future land use map in the twenty twenty comprehensive plan. Fourteen West Hawthorne Drives for the purpose of authorizing the rezoning fourteen West Hawthorne Drive, adopting a new comprehensive rezoning map. And related future land use map in the twenty twenty comprehensive plan for the Town of La Plata and all matters related to said map.
Thank you very much for that, so ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-nine is um, it, do I have someone that can make a motion and that is willing to make a motion for adoption of uh, this ordinance?
Uh, Madam Mayor, I'll, I'll make a motion to. I guess adopt ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-nine. Zoning map amendment and amended future land use map in the twenty twenty comprehensive plan, fourteen West Hawthorne Drive.
You, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, any question?
Is this the Armory property?
It is.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries, it brings us to new business, so I'm gonna start off with Councilman uh, Goldsmith. For his uh, report.
Yes, the Design Review Board did not have any action this month, so October, we were quiet, no action.
Jordan, to the point.
Am I up, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you there.
Um, you have your uh, report to give?
Oh, yes, we did not unfortunately meet this last month, so no report.
All right, Councilwoman Bryant Ward.
Yes, Madam, we did, um, the town, uh, the planning commission did have a meeting. Um, there was only one item on the agenda, the big thing was is that we did to have two applicants to fill the vacancies. On the planning commission had one interview, um, she subsequently uh, withdrew her application. Um, and we do have an interview on Friday, so looking forward to that.
Okay, thank you very much, and Councilman Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, um, the Parks and Recreation, Recreation Commission didn't meet, but we are, have a scheduled meeting on November the tenth. And then a couple items uh, of importance that the uh, we've shared with, with the Parks and Recreation Commission. Charles County is updating their twenty twenty-one land preservation park and recreation plan and they've scheduled some focus groups. Online focus groups on November the first and November the third, I have signed up to participate at the November one session. Um, the month of October through the Maryland Department of Transportation has been a. Uh, Walktober, Walktober month where they emphasize walking, cycling and pedestrian safely, safety. And they've offered uh, four free uh, webinars about that subject, in fact, I believe the last one is scheduled for Thursday, October the twenty-eighth. I've shared some of that information with the Parks and Recreation Commission. Cause I, I've attended at least one or two of those webinars as well. And then uh, one final update from the La Plata Town Center Corporation. I, I'm trying to get a, our next meeting scheduled for November eighth or ninth. Uh, so far I've gotten a couple of yays and I do apologize for the delay and. And meeting uh, much quicker than this, so I, I've already made that effort and hopefully we'll meet early in November. That will conclude my report, subject to any questions.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Thank you, um, Councilman Jenkins, has um, the La Plata, this um, town corporation got reinstated with the state, are they back in good standing?
Not yet, that's, that'll be on the top of our agenda uh, when we meet in November.
All right, thank you very much and that brings me to my report, first of all, um, we did have an interview last night, uh, Hugh Williams and I interviewed. Uh, Maynard Mark Thorne for a position on the Board of uh, Appeals, he is a resident of Steeplechase. Uh, we had, and he was a fellow uh, um, Citizens Police Academy uh. Graduate with me and he really would like to give back to the community after asking many questions um, to him. We would like to present to the board uh, that his. Uh, to accept his nomination uh, to serve on the Board of Appeals, so. I would like to um, make a motion to nominate or to accept uh, Maynard Mark Thorne for a position on the Board of Appeals. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any questions? His resume was quite impressive.
And I, I'm sorry, Mayor, uh, so how long's the term, I, I forget the Board of Appeals term.
Oh, I think it's three years and, and I'd ask Kelly to back me on that, but. Uh, I, it's a minimum of three years, we have two members right now, we're still looking for one um, alternative. Mr. Thornby appointed this evening.
And then did I, is there any kind of a training process they go through, cause it's, it's kind of a quasi-illegal hearing?
Yes, no, they don't, it's just uh, reading, he's former military, he's a former, uh, he's a fire um, inspector.
Okay.
Seems to have a, a good grasp on um, right and wrong and the ability to read um, you know, the, the. He is definitely a rule follower.
Okay, thank you.
And Challenger?
I was just gonna ask a little bit further background, cause I didn't, I didn't see his resume, cause I didn't interview him, but. Just wanted a little bit further background on his occupation and you gave us that, is he currently employed, is he retired, um?
He is employed, um, and he is working up in Prince George's County as a um, fire inspector.
Okay, cool, great.
So I have a motion and a second, um, all in favor for appointing uh, Mayor, uh, Maynard Mark Thorne to the Board of Appeals, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries, uh, I only have a, a few things just to really. Kind of highlight again, trick or treat from the Business Association is this Saturday from twelve to three. We also will be over there at Steeplechase uh, looking at those animals in uh, Halloween costumes on Saturday, so that should be, that's at two o'clock, that should be fun. And Sunday, November seventh, we do have the salute to Veterans Parade, it's going to be so nice to be able to have our. Fifteen hundred participants back there marching uh, uh, our streets and. Bobby guaranteed me that the big flag will be hanging again, so I'm excited about that. Thursday, uh, no, uh, Wednesday, November tenth, the Chamber of Commerce is having a um, first responders appreciation dinner. And um, each of the first responders, the police, the sheriff and all, were asked. were asked to submit at least one honorary. And I know the chief uh submitted an honorary that will be recognized uh for their efforts and heroism. So uh many of us are attending that. And then on on November eleventh, entire council is invited, as well as the public, to uh the American Legion Veterans Day Ceremony, which is always on eleven eleven, and it starts at eleven A M. So that is what I have for my report. Um, with that, and do I have any questions? All right, with that, do I have a motion to e- adjourn? It's been a long day. All right.
Request.
I move to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Mayor?
Uh, yes?
What about my request to hear from the other four town council members? You glossed right over that and never gave them an opportunity to respond.
No, I I I heard what you said, and I will give them an opportunity to gather their thoughts, and they can respond at a different time. Um, thank you very much, I have a motion to adjourn, do I have a second? I'm, I second it, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you for a great meeting, have a great night.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, staff.